I'll now bring to order the town of Cordera Madera regular town council meeting for Tuesday, June 6, 2023 at 6:30 PM. Can I get a call to order a roll call?
Councilmember Casissa.
Here.
Councilmember Avasio.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Beckman is absent today. Mayor Lee.
Here. Can we do a salute to the flag?
I believe just the flag of the United States. Through the public.
Okay, item number two, this is open time for public comment. Any member of the public may address the town council concerning any item not on the council's agenda. Speakers will be limited to three minutes unless otherwise specified by the mayor or the presiding officer. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak? Please make sure the mic is turned on also. Yeah, just there's a little switch that'll turn green. There you go.
Hello, very quickly, David Bell, 33 Echo Avenue, Cordera Madero. Just a quick sincere appreciation to Public Works for responding in a timely manner to community input to throw down some gravel and what I call the gravel pathway between Echo Avenue cul-de-sac to the path to Seneca Comlente. The path is well used by children going to safe routes. And during the winter, it really experienced some puddling. And so the gravel was well appreciated by the town. Again, thanks for, oh, and we're looking forward to working with B-PAC and improving that pathway for bicycle and pedestrian use. Again, thanks and look forward to future collaboration with the beautification committee on that area.
Thank you very much. So anyone else? Seeing none in public? Is there any online?
We do have a hand raised from Clark Miller. And Clark, you should be able to speak now.
Great. Good evening. Good evening, council members. My name is Clark Miller, and I'm a board member of the Cordera Madera Football Club. On behalf of the over 1,000 local kids and families in our club, I wanted to share with you an update on field conditions at Town Park and ask for your expedited review of the issue. We've been working diligently with Cordera Madera Parks and Recreation staff and public work staff for the last year to strategize on a maintenance plan for the fields to get them into good playing condition for the 2023 season. The agreed upon maintenance plan called for rolling the fields, performing aeration, applying seed and fertilizer, and adding topsoil where necessary. However, due to a variety of factors, including an abnormally rainy winter, it's clear that while the fields have shown some improvement due to Public Works' concerted efforts, there's still significant work required to get them to a condition comparable with the other natural grass fields in our league. Fortunately, with soccer tryouts now over, there's an opportunity to perform a more rigorous maintenance program during the summer months before the club season begins on August 14. In recent conversation with Public Works, they've recommended performing an enhanced maintenance plan that involves a more frequent series of aerating, seeding, and fertilizing, all while allowing the east and west fields to rest for the summer. While we're optimistic these efforts will yield better results for the fall season, there is, however, a significant impediment to these efforts achieving their full potential, and that's the current abundance of weeds on the field, and I can share photos and a follow-up email. These weeds are highly invasive, are currently spreading across large swaths of the fields, and are outcompeting the grass to become the more dominant ground covering. Furthermore, the weeds grow at different heights and densities from the existing dry grass, which exacerbates the unevenness of the existing field surface and creates depressions on the fields which are challenging and potentially dangerous for players to navigate. In order for the summer maintenance plans to be truly effective, these weeds must be eradicated first, and there are two possible approaches to do so successfully. One, apply a herbicide to kill the weed and then reseed the areas where the grass has been unable to grow. This would be a one-time request for a temporary period only during the summer break on targeted areas only of the soccer fields that are fenced off. Or two, dig down the required depth to remove the roots of the invasive weeds and replace the areas with new sod. This latter approach is typically more costly. Given the urgency of improving the fields before mid-August, we request this topic be placed on the June 20 town council agenda. In a perfect world, I suspect town council would like the Parks and Rec Commission to review it first. However, they do not meet until June 26, and the following town council meeting after that is not until July 20 due to July 4th holiday, past the point at which the necessary field improvements can be made before the start of the soccer season. It's also worth pointing out that while the town has an integrated pest management plan, the plan is not specific on whether the Parks and Rec Committee needs to hear this item before town council can act. If Parks and Rec Commission must weigh in, then we request a special meeting or direct town staff to work directly on this issue to find resolution. There are additional emails submitted on this issue that you'll see in your packets, and thank you for your consideration.
Hey, thank you. Is there any other?
We don't have any other hands raised. And as noted, there were three other comments received earlier today which were forwarded to cancel. They are available on the website and printed copies are available on the table over where the agenda packet is.
Yeah. Based on the feedback, is there any, is there any follow-up to the comments now? Or do we want to follow up later?
Yeah, we're not going to get into a discussion, but I were aware of these concerns. I'm working, RJ and I just discussed this today, actually. And so I think due to the time considerations and really needing to get this the maintenance program sort of underway as quickly as possible, we do want to try to get something back to the council, perhaps at the next meeting if we're able to, so that you can consider sort of the options available for the summer in advance of the soccer season.
Thank you for that. Okay, so seeing no other public comment online, I'll close public comment and move on to presentations. Seeing none, moving on to the consent calendar. The purpose of the consent calendar is to group items together which are routine and have been discussed previously and do not require further discussion. They will be approved by a single motion. Any member of the town council, town staffer, public may request to remove an item for discussion. Does anyone in the council want to pull an item? Staff or the public? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Okay, I make motion approved consent items for A through F.
A second.
Okay, I'll call the names of the members present. Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
And Mayor Lee.
Yes.
Thank you. And the motion carries.
Okay, so that closes the consent calendar. Moving on to public hearings, public hearing 5A is the consideration and possible adoption of resolution number 30, 2023, approving the base rate change application to Mill Valley Refuge Service. Is there staff?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Lee and members of the council. I'm just going to provide a brief introduction and some background for you. I know I provided you with a very meaty staff report. There's a lot in it. I know, at least for two of our council members, this is their first garbage rate hearing for Mill Valley Refuge Services, and so I wanted to provide as much detail as possible. We also have with us tonight Jean Delazopa and Jennifer Dami from Mill Valley Refuge Services and Jim Howison from R3 Consulting, you'll see on the screen is joining us online. They're here as our subject matter experts to provide some additional information for you, answer any outstanding questions, and introduce themselves. So the discussion and resolution before you is for a 5.11% maximum rate increase for delivery of solid waste collection and dual stream recycling services. As some background, the town has had a franchise with agreement with Mill Valley Refuge Services since 1999. Our current 20-year, six-month agreement runs through December 31, 2026, and that is where we are currently in our franchise agreement. On April 1, 2023, Mill Valley Refuge submitted a rate application requesting a 4.31% rate increase that would take effect July 21, 2023. Mill Valley Refuge Services is required to present a rate application to the town by April 1 annually. So they were timely with their application. Every two to three years, the city of Mill Valley takes the lead on contracting with R3 Consulting to evaluate the rate application and perform a rate review for the nine contracting jurisdictions. They analyze the rate application and make sure that it adheres to everything set out in each of the rate agreements with each of the nine jurisdictions, and those are Belvedere, Cordera Madero, Mill Valley, Tiburon, Marin County, Almonte Sanitary District, Alto Sanitary District, Homestead Valley Sanitary District, and the Strawberry Recreation District. R3 completed that rate review in late, in May, and provided their report to the contracting jurisdictions. And in their findings, they actually identified recommended adjustments that would result in an increase to the requested rate of up to 5.11% from that original. What was it? 14 or 4.31. Thank you. Um. Mill Valley Refuge Services and R3 can answer any question specific to the two items that they identified and what constitutes a fair rate of return. But in summary, those two items were, the primary adjustment was due to new updated information about the projected cost of processing recyclables in the coming 2023 and 24 rate year. Mill Valley Refuge Services contracts with Marin Sanitary Service for recyclables processing and due to declining revenues received by Marin Sanitary Service for the sale of recyclable commodities, as happens periodically, especially during market downturns. Mill services notified Mill Valley Refuge Service in May of projected large increases in the cost of processing recyclables in 2024. However, though, the projected increase is approximately a doubling of the projected cost of processing recyclables, the resulting increase to customer rates is still small, averaging 0.698% for the contracting agencies. And the second item identified was an adjustment for reimbursable costs to the city of Mill Valley as the jurisdiction that coordinated the rate review. For this rate review engagement was also made amounting to a 0.076 average increase in the rates. Cordera Madero's portion this year and those that that rate adjustment was was projected out over three years. So Cordera Madero's portion this year is just $2,817. R3 recommended the increases and Mill Valley Refuge Services agreed to the recommendations. And on May 23, Mill Valley Refuge Service admitted, submitted a revised rate application and cover letter, and that is included as attachment three to your staff report. Again, the increase would total 5.11%. Oh, and as as a reference in your packet, along with the resolution that is proposed, the rate sheets and draft terms and conditions are included with that. If you want to review that, again, the increase would total, oh, a 5.11% increase results in a 2.2, oh, sorry, $2.29 per month increase for residential curbside customers that have 32-gallon can services and $1.95 per month increase for those who have 20-gallon can service. We also wanted to note, as on page two of the staff report, Mill Valley Refuge did not request a rate increase last year. And since 2019, the combined total of rate increases have totaled 13.1%, which is an average of 2.62% over the past, each year for the past five years. So just to summarize, the proposed rate sheet and terms and conditions are also included as attachments to the draft resolution, and the changes to the proposed terms and conditions are summarized on page four of the staff report, and I included that under the fiscal impact section if you'd like to review that. The final page of the PDF of attachment two in this document, the the rate application, you'll see highlighted in yellow, shows the impact of the R3 review on the requested rate increase and how the 5.11% increase was derived. And now we can introduce Jean Delazopa and Jennifer Dami from Mill Valley Refuge Service and Jim Howison from R3 Consulting, so that they can introduce themselves, speak to a few details in the report, and help answer any questions that council may have. And I'm also happy to answer any questions council may have for staff.
Hello, esteemed council. My name is Jean Delazopa. I'm managing partner of Mill Valley Refuge.
Hello, council. I'm Jennifer Dami, and I am CFO and new managing owner of Mill Valley Refuge as my husband retired after 43 years in June of last year. First female owner.
Of us being here today. Oh, sorry, Jim.
That's okay. My name's Jim Howison. I'm with I'm with R3 Consulting, and I'm the individual that actually conducted the review of the application.
On the purpose of this hearing for here today is that we are requesting a 5.11% rate increase as as related to the franchise agreement that we have with the city of Cordera Madero. Through the process, we completed our rate review with R3. We agreed with any findings that we had. I can attest that in regards to the change, that was due to updated information that we received through Marin Sanitary Service during our engagement with R3, and we were able to update that and include it into the rates. In regards to where the rate increase is going to be heading towards, we've seen a rise in operating costs that include, most importantly, diesel. We saw 40% increase in diesel fuel costs. We also faced inflationary pressures due to COVID that impacted our ability to purchase trucks and also include parts and repairs. In regards to our labor union contract, we did have, we did negotiate a four-year labor union contract with our union drivers, garbage and recycling. It's a four-year term. So we were happy to give them a livable wage increase so that they're 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 able to feel very well compensated for the work that they do. And we're also, in terms of internally for with our structure, we do have a safety lead that is going to help assist us in keeping our drivers safe and help us mitigate through rising workman compensation costs. In addition, we are also making sure that all of our jurisdictions are in compliance with SB 1383, and we're happy that Dave Bijio has taken the lead in that role. And we've been working closely with businesses and multifamily units in order for them to be in compliance with SB 1383. In terms of future legislation that that is impacting our industry is SB 54. We were in support of that bill. That's going to be a huge bill that will help reduce plastic pollution and allow plastic and compostable product packaging to be 100% by 2032. So that's exciting news. I will lead it to my fellow partner, Jennifer Dami, to have any other additional comments.
Thank you. I'm so much shorter than everybody. I really don't have any additional comments. I just want you all to know that Mill Valley Refuge prides ourself in running as lean as possible as we can, especially with the rising costs in California. And the I know for myself, my job has probably quadrupled in the past 10 years. I've been I've been here for 18 because of all the mandates that the state has given to us. And in taking care of our employees to make sure that they are safe and and well taken care of, and most important to our customers, my mom and dad, I was raised in Cordera Madero, and they live on Arrowhead Lane, and they've been there for 59 years as of next month. So I, this is my city. So I take a lot of pride in Cordera Madero, and I always have. So thank you very much. I do have one more thing. We do have an additional partner with us, Alex Iveroni. He has taken his father's position. He retired in 2022, and Alex is, we're very happy to have him with us. Thank you.
Jim, if you have any comments, the floor is for your, is off to you.
Okay, I'm just going to make this brief and just kind of give a description or an illustration of what R3 contributes to this process. So once we receive the application, probably 95% of everything we receive is an Excel form. Part of our duties and responsibilities is to check the mathematics to make sure that the rate application ties to any supporting documentation. We also make sure that the application has adhered to previous practices. So if there's a change in accounting, anything of that nature, we make a note of that. That did not happen this year, but we do look for those items. We make sure that the application conforms with the franchise agreement. We also look at the projections, projections with puerile labor, GNA such as office salaries, et cetera, like that. We, and the purpose of that is to make sure that those projections are reasonable. And we also do the same practice for revenue. And that basically sums up the the task that we perform, but it is an extensive review. And as Jean mentioned, before we make any final reports, we do discuss it with the parties involved and make sure that we are in agreement. So thank you.
Hey, thank you. So Rebecca's.
I think you, Mayor Lee, I was just going to say that that concludes our presentation to council, and we're happy to take questions. We have everyone here to answer.
Okay, so I'll open it up to the council. Is there anyone that wants to start us off? Okay.
I just have one quick question, not so much on the rate, but I noticed you have a low, low, a program for low income, they only if they're residential. Is there a program if an apartment building or multifamily is in a sense designated for low income? Or have you ever given any consideration of that? Or I know we have permanent supportive housing, which is over in Casablanca next to Marin Joe's. I don't know if you have any programs geared towards, again, either one, just to get it out there.
Do you offer? We do offer a program through PG&E Cares where we do offer discounts for elderly citizens that qualify. In regards to your question, I think that's a great suggestion, and we'll definitely look into it and get back to you.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate that. Thanks. That was it.
I just have one question, probably revealing that I'm kind of new here. SB 1383, can you tell me what that is? Sorry to make you have to bounce back up there again, but.
Um, so for SB 1383, it was a climate change bill that was passed through Cal Recycle, and the point of the bill is to reduce organic food waste that's going into the landfill. The goals is to have 75% reduced by 2026. It's, what we do is, we already offer organic compost material, and we haul our organic compost material to Redwood Landfill through WM Earth Care. And an additional aspect of SB 1383 is it requires proper container labeling. So with new customers, we're going to be offering blue lid and a blue body, and that's going to represent bottles and cans. And then for other recyclable containers, it's going to be brown lid and blue body. It's a, it's a great bill because it's going to help impact climate change by diverting organic waste from the landfill. And I'm also happy to provide additional information through you through Cal Recycle trainings that I have taken.
Thanks. Now that you mention it, I'm, I was aware. I just didn't know the number of the law. So thank you.
Okay, so my only question is, how do your parents feel about the rate increase in Cordera Madero? No, I'm just kidding. All right. So with that, I'll close council questions and open it up to public comments. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing, going once, going twice. Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone online that would like to speak?
We have nine attendees and three hands raised. So we're going to start with Steve Lilvis. Little, sorry if I mispronounced that, which I probably did. Oops. Okay, you should be able to speak. Steve, you could just unmute yourself and.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, there's a comment to make. As far as the workforce goes, I live up also Meadow Sweet here, and they come down Meadow Sweet and they leave the the cans out in the middle of the street half the time. You come down there in the morning after the trucks have been through there and you play dodgeball with the more containers that are scattered all about. I'm not too happy about that. And also, they they don't bother to take very good care of your, the lids are broken off our cans and I'm not too pleased with that.
Steve, is that the end of your comment?
Yeah, that's the end of my comment. I think the rates are plenty for what you're doing.
We, we're having a hard time hearing you, Steve.
Yeah, I think the rates are plenty for the work that you do. 135 bucks a month, a lot of money to haul away the garbage. We have to sort everything and do all the work for you.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have Lucinda Smith.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, Lucinda. Go ahead.
Thank you. I would like to thank the representatives from Mill Valley Refuge for, on behalf of the workers, because I think that they do a good job. I live up on Alta Way, and they come by very early. They sometimes leave a few things that I think fall out of the truck are annoying, but on the whole, they're very congenial and service oriented. I did want to ask a question of the gentleman that presented with regard to the labor negotiation contract that has been worked out for four years. What percentage was included in that contract for the workers? And how does that relate to the percentage that you're asking for us to approve? And secondly, there is a one-year renewal always on our behalf. And I wonder if you were willing to sign a four-year contract with the labor people, why we can't have a contract that would be good for maybe two or three years? That was, that was basically, oh, one other question. You mentioned that you're going to be changing some of the recyclables requirements. Does that mean we're going to get another can that's going to be marked for specific recyclable materials? Thank you.
Okay, we have Patty Stolier.
Thank you. I had a question to clarify. It sounded like you said that if someone is enrolled in the PG&E discount, that they would also get a discount with Mill Valley Refuge. If that is the case, I would like to spread it among the seniors so that they know that. And then my question is, are you aware of what Roseville Refuge trucks are doing using recycled wastewater for fuel? And is that something that you're looking into with the increased price of diesel? Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. We don't have any other hands raised or emailed public comment on this item.
Okay, is there anyone in the public that's changed their mind? All right. So seeing none, is that would anyone on staff or the presenters like to address any of the public comment?
In regards to the first question, and with labor rates, for the first year, the rate increase is 15% on the wage rate. And then for the subsequent periods afterwards, it's at 5%. In regards to short-term contracts with just to, just to speak on behalf, typically longer-term contracts, when it comes to solid waste disposal, is the industry norm due to the financial burden that it takes in purchasing trucks and keeping up with regulations such as through CARB. That is just one example. And in regards to the container question with recycling, we are going to integrate the new containers with the coloring with new customers, and we will gradually phase in also with garbage containers in accordance with SB 1383. And for the PG&E And for, um, the PG&E discount cares program, we do have additional information on our website. Um, I'm happy to provide additional resources to residents that are eligible. And, um, in regards to Roseville Refuge trucks, um, we are exploring other avenues when it comes to our fleet. For instance, there are talks about advanced clean fleets. They've passed regulation in terms of zero emission vehicles. That is an avenue that we are exploring and we will also look into biodiesel and other types of alternative fuel sources. Thank you.
Right. Thank you for addressing that. So with that, I'll close public comment, uh, that was our, and then bring it back to the dice for any, uh, final comments.
Just thank you for your service. I think this has obviously been a very well thought out, uh, uh, presentation and, um, the fact that R three was involved basically auditing the request, um, gives me a great deal of comfort and I feel very supportive. So, thank you.
Yeah, I can support the rate increase also. It seems like it's within the, the franchise agreement or the grant that we have with the Mill Valley Refuge. Um, your application, R three validated the numbers in the data you provided. So like Pat was saying, there's a level of support that the data is accurate and is justified. If I have this correct and I go back, hopefully my math isn't off and go back three years to two thousand twenty-one, it looks like it averages about two percent a year, um, for those three years, which I don't want to say it's minimal, but it is, um, somewhat minimal. So again, I can support the, um, application in the increase.
Um, so I forgot to ask one of my questions. Are you in a central service? So like when COVID first happened and everybody got to stay home, did the garbage service keep operating? It did so that we didn't have trash building up in our yards. Okay. I think that's an important thing to understand because I, I want to touch on uh, how important these people are and why they deserve a living wage, safe, living, working environments and well-maintained equipment, all of which I think you've very much justified, right? I also think that you operate in a changing environment of waste distribution, which is a very unknown and we're still trying to figure out as a society. So, and I, I know from engaging with you and other, uh, community events that you're interested in trying to be a good steward of that. So I applaud you on that. Um, and then to Fred's point, you know, even if it's the two point six to three percent, that's an average annual increase that we see in salaries and other types of kind of inflationary pressured um, increases. And the fact that you're not do, going above and beyond that given COVID, uh, you know, the, the value that these people are providing and, um, and everything else, it's, it's actually, uh, a applaudable. So, um, you know, I can make the findings as well and, and, uh, you know, I really do enjoy this process because it takes the guesswork out of it and you know, we can really talk about the, the, the good things you're doing instead of feeling like, you know, are you provide, you know, I mean, ultimately the customer service, I know that if that's called and, and relayed to you, I've seen in the past that those are always addressed, right? I mean, you provide the garbage cans, however you need to treat them to do your business is your business, right? But, um, so with that, I, I would look to the council to make a motion to approve the rate increase.
Uh, I can go ahead and make the motion to resolution number, um, and my eyes are going. Uh, thirty-two oh twenty-three, which approves a base race change, um, application of Mill Valley Refuge.
Second.
Council member Casista?
Yes.
Council member Avasio?
Yes.
Council member Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Do the motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much for your time. Okay, uh, do we need a minute or two between, uh, items to kind of get set up for this next?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, all right. I think we need a water. Just one moment. All right. Ready? Ready? Okay. All right. Um, so now we'll continue with, uh, the public hearings, uh, item five B, which is the review to review the proposed town operating budget for the fiscal year of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Their staff.
Absolutely. Um, thank you, uh, Mayor Lee and council members. Um, I'm very excited to be able to present to you this evening, the town's, uh, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. This is, uh, this budget is really, I think, an extension of the priorities that this council uh, set dirt during its strategic, uh, work plan sessions earlier this year in January and February. Um, and includes all of the fiscally responsible policies that the town council uh, and town leadership has implemented over the last several years, uh, with the assistance of the finance committee and the sales tax committee. So, um, uh, really a continuation of the good leadership on the fiscal side that we've had over the last number of years. I think it's also really a credit to the one person who actually isn't in the room with us this evening, our finance director, Daria Correa, um, who prepared all of the budget reports and guided our internal budget process and thankfully is now home, uh, doing much better after experiencing some unfortunate medical issues over the last ten days. Um, so we're sorry really that, uh, Daria can't be here. This is really the highlight I know for her of the year. Where she gets to present the budget and all of her hard work over the year and good stewardship on that end. Um, but we're certainly prepared to walk you through, um, the proposed budget and do our best to answer questions that this council may have um, and members of the public. And, um, at the same time, I do want to emphasize that tonight is really meant to be an introduction of the budget. Um, it's, uh, there, if there are questions tonight, um, we do have the opportunity, uh, to follow up. Um, things that we cannot address tonight, um, which you would like more information about. We certainly can come but, come back and provide at the next meeting and I'll be consulting with Daria, uh, as I was today. Uh, cramming for this, uh, budget presentation, uh, this evening. Um, but I'll, I'll be consulting and Stacy as well, consulting, um, with Daria over the next couple of weeks as, as needed. Um, before getting started, I think tonight was also an opportunity and it's an opportunity for me to recognize and introduce our, our excellent finance team who's sitting beside me here. Uh, Stacy Charlebois, um, hopefully I got that nice, nice uh, pronunciation there. Our senior accountant, who's really been in instrumental in transitioning our budget, um, process and our budget itself to Open Gov. We had the presentation back, I think in February where we talked about the online budget portal. Um, and, uh, Stacy also manages really complex accounting functions for both the town and SD two. Um, and as well, I wanted to, uh, introduce Donna Carnegie sitting over here to my right. So, um, our financial analyst who manages payroll, uh, accounts payable, other key functions in our finance department and both Stacy and Donna. If you haven't met them, they've replaced, um, longtime employees who retired within the last two years. Um, and I'll speak for Daria. I know Daria and I talked about really wanting to, um, commend our staff and just say how fortunate we are to have such a professional, um, talented and skilled and quality people, uh, join our team, uh, with the town. So thanks for being here. Um, I'm going to do most of the talking tonight, uh, but Stacy's going to help me navigate through the online budget uh, document. And, um, given this is the first time we've presented it, the budget in this format, I, I wanted to have her explain, uh, um, at the outset, uh, how to members of the public and the council, um, how the budget information is really organized on this online, um, in the online budget book. And, um, this is really intended to make the budget more accessible, uh, easier to navigate and therefore, uh, easier to understand and user-friendly, uh, than in years past. So I handed over to Stacy really quick and maybe you can show how this looks on, on the online through the link and.
Thank you, Adam. Um, if I can share my screen. Um, yes, so I, um, Daria and I, um, presented, uh, to the council in January, um, our Open Gov platform, which really was, um, brought on to accomplish three major goals, which was for inter, internal tracking and reporting purposes, also for external transparency reporting. And then the third was the online budget book, which is what you're now finally seeing today. Um, so we, um, took our budget online and, um, it can be exported to PDF, which I, we included in the, um, staff report as an attachment, but it really is designed to, to live online. Um, so that's where it looks the best. Um, so this homepage here, you can see to the table of contents. And once you click to the table of contents, you can click through and link to any of the sections that you want to review. Um, this table of contents, uh, is laid out mirroring our prior year, um, budget binders to try to make it a, um, easy, as easy a transition as possible to this new platform. Um, so really it follows the same structure as it always has been. It's just instead of it being printed and with tabs you flip through, you can just click right through the links. Um, so one other thing I wanted to highlight in this online platform is that if you are looking at something like, for example, revenue pulls up this, one of our tables and you can actually click this that says view report at the bottom. And that opens up the full platform with all the interactive functions. So if you find a table and you want to drill down into something or see something a different way, all those live links will take you to the reporting so that you can do that. So I'll put that to. Um, so that's, that pretty much concludes the introduction to the platform. And so, um, I'll be.
Yeah. And I think, I think the other. It turned it off. All right. So I think the other important thing about our transition there to Open Gov is that this is a companion document, essentially the, the budget. Uh, but over the course of the year, essentially, um, I think the reporting function and sort of the drilling down, that is actually updated every night. Um, I believe if I have that right, or every couple of nights, um, to, to provide real-time information on how we're doing on our fiscal goals. So if anybody wants to really track that over the course of the year, they can get that information and as well as staff as well, importantly, of course.
Um, the, the intention is, uh, every night, but right now we're troubleshooting some tech issues with, like with any new system.
These are not easy systems to implement, but I, I know Stacy's been working hard at it. So I wanted to show it off for the council. So we're, we're getting there. Um, all right. So on to, uh, the budget, if we can pull up the, um, what is this one called? The general fund budget summary. As a general approach to this presentation, I'm going to start by discussing the general fund budget summary. Uh, this really provides an overview of the town's operating budget and then I'll have, RJ is going to join for the presentation of the capital, um, budget summary, the second half essentially of the presentation. So, uh, the general, the general fund operating budget, um, that's shown on the screen. We also printed that out for you. So you should have a, yeah, a, an eight and a half by eleven blown up copy. I know it was a little bit small in the attachment, so hopefully this helps. Um, and, and really I'm going to start high level. I'm going to highlight a few things, but I'm really looking to see, um, what your questions are and where you want to drive this conversation. But certainly looking at this, uh, table here, um, total revenues are projected in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four to be twenty-four point two million. It's generally flat compared to, um, uh, the estimated actual revenue in twenty-two, twenty-three and about one point three percent increase over fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two revenues. So we're, we're consistent on the revenue side generally. Um, property taxes um, continue to make up a significant portion of our general fund, um, uh, revenues. Um, it's approximately a third of our general fund revenue. And, uh, it's, it, it's actually expected to increase about four percent um, from this year, this fiscal year to, uh, fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Sales taxes, uh, the other big, uh, fund uh, that is also approximately one third, a little bit more than a third of our total. Actually, it's more like forty percent of our total revenue, operating budget revenue. Um, that is, um, expected, uh, let me, uh, information. Um, there's the, there's the one percent, what we call the one percent sales tax. Um, in consultation with our, uh, sales tax advisors, um, they're advising that that pool, essentially our portion of the county pool is going to decrease a little bit, uh, approximately four percent over the next year um, by about a three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Uh, generally what they're seeing is the overall market is there's a, the higher interest rates are um, generally, uh, reducing some of the, um, spending and particularly on, on, um, financing options with vehicles and whatnot. So that's at least their projections. Um, that was also, I would say, just, I know projections last year as well, were also kind of that those purchases would be down. We didn't find that as much. It was relatively, uh, even last year. Um, and as you'll see, they're also projecting that our measure, our local sales tax, our three-quarter cent sales tax is actually going to increase. Um, I, I, um, and stay relatively flat, but around the same revenues, around four million dollars that we received last year, um, through our local sales tax measure. See. As far as, um, expenditures, the total operating expenditures are expected to decrease, uh, by about six point seven million. Um, that's, um, sorry, that's the, the bottom blue um, tally on the far right there. Um, to twenty-three point nine million. Um, this is really due uh, to the expenditure of our certificate of proceeds, um, purchased for the town hall project in the amount of seven point seven million that we spent this year, which we are not going to spend this year. So, um, our town's twenty-three, twenty-four ending balance, which is in orange there is expected to increase by approximately three hundred forty-seven thousand or two point six percent to, uh, thirteen point eight million dollars. Um, at the bottom of this table, again, on the far right, this ending balance allows the town to, uh, maintain uh, four point seven seven million dollars in reserves or twenty percent of its operating budget, which is the town council's goal and, and policy that's been set. Um, we also have, um, three point five million dollars in the, in the town's pension stabilization trust. Um, and, uh, wanted to note that we have another two point oh million dollars in a pension reserve that was created, created using unallocated or unassigned ending balance from the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. Um, that was, we discussed this during the, um, earlier this year during the mid-year budget revision where we had an unallocated balance, um, in uh, twenty-one, twenty-two, about three point two million dollars, two million of that in consultation with the finance committee and, and staff's recommendation was to put part, essentially part two million dollars of that into a pension reserve in addition to the pension stabilization trust. Really because, um, we haven't yet caught up to the down, the downturn in the market um, from at least the pension side and how CalPERS, um, essentially includes that in its actuarial statements. And so we are expecting to be hit with some increasing pension costs and we'll have some decisions to make. Pension costs and we'll have some decisions to make in the upcoming. Year or two uh about how much to really um proactively fund our pension uh debt. Uh let's see, and then so at the very bottom there, even uh just noting that we have that pension reserve, we also are projecting an un uh. Unassigned or unallocated and and ending balance in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four of approximately two point two million. Um so that allows us a little bit of leeway if the sales tax revenue doesn't come in as we um would like uh but. Um in any case, that's where we are. I I wanted to um. Also note with respect to the unallocated funds, we are expecting at the end of this fiscal year to have a two point two million dollars. Uh surplus and and we will be having that same conversation about how essentially to use that funding in the mid-year budget revisions. Um and there's some options that I know um we'll be talking about and when we get to the capital projects, um that's been an option where we've parked some of that funding in the past. And we'll obviously have more information at that time to uh to make some decisions on that. So really, you know, overall, just looking at the summary of this, what we're what we're explaining, express uh what this chart is really in the tables is telling us. You know, the town's fortunate to be, I think, in a fiscally healthy position. But we remain cautious and we're always going to remain cautious, um especially given unpredictable sort of the macroeconomic picture at the moment. And the expected increase to our pension costs in the near future future, so. Um I do, as part of expenditures, I do want to touch on one aspect of this. Table, I'll just drill down um in a little bit on staffing. Because as you can see in this uh um. Table, staffing costs, expenditures are expected to increase fairly significantly in twenty-three, twenty-four. Um and and really this is a result of a number of things. Um one, uh it first, I think. It's fair to say that last year our uh salary numbers were, I would say. I don't want to say artificially lower than they were. Um would otherwise have been, but we had about seven vacancies or we have actually seven vacancies of our current. Uh full-time employee um staff of forty-three currently. And so um in the mid-year, we revise those numbers, um but I it you know. That means that we're projecting obviously to fill those numbers in the next fiscal year and those salaries will be reflected in the increase in the salaries and. Will be um reflected in the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty uh twenty-three, twenty-four numbers. Second, uh about a third of the increase, um which equates to about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars are increases to sanitary district two salaries. Um as you know, we're doing a lot of capital uh improvement work uh and maintenance on that side. Um and um that money will be paid back to the town, so it's it's reflected here, but it's actually will come back into the town's budget, uh operating budget. Um and that's about five percent of the increase. And then finally, uh of course, salary increases reflect um three percent cost of living increase um July first for all town and uh staff. Employees. We do have step increases. Um we have. Some promotions as well reflected here, um and I think that's important just to note that that's a big part of our. Organizational philosophy um and our staff retention goals. I think that shows that we're just, we have growth opportunities within our organization and and want to promote from within, so. Um some of the additional cost is reflected with promotions that you'll see and we'll talk about actually later this evening with the with another item. And uh additionally, we're projecting the addition of another staff member, so to go up to forty-four FTEs. Uh and this is something that I've um discussed in the past, but it's, we have a number of master plans that are really going to be hitting. And hopefully being completed. Um obviously, the most uh the one that's. Coming down the road, I think will be completed the uh the fastest will be the park master plan. Uh but in the future coming years, we also have the storm drain master plan. I think there's the sanitary sewer master plan as well, so. Um I I've put a a project manager in here as well under the fiscal year um twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Not exactly sure when we would actually staff that way. I really want to get our current vacancy staff first, but I think. Um putting in here and showing it is is an important part of our our plan for the next fiscal year. So with that, I was going to move to the capital uh budget. We can move to the other table. And I'll just do an introduction here and then RJ, if you can take it, but. But I think what's impressive here, and I I don't know the numbers going back. Beyond last year um or but I I fully suspect that they're not. Um there's a lot of projects being worked on. There's a lot of expenditure here. Which just means we're um RJ's team and RJ uh you know is are really attacking. Infrastructure projects, um even accounting for, I think last year we had about a nine. On the on the far, I think, left-hand column. Sorry, I'm going to look down at mine. The twenty-three, twenty-four budget, you see at the all the way at the bottom, uh the total is about sixteen point one. Sixteen point, yeah, sixteen point one million dollars worth of um capital projects. In twenty-three, twenty-four. Last year it was about nineteen million, but the vast majority of that, I think about eight million of it was town hall construction and that was expended. So this year we're looking at about five million um for the town hall project. Which still leaves over eleven million dollars worth of um capital projects, which really um reflect uh infrastructure improvements. Throughout, um we have obviously uh some related to um a lot related to our multi-modal transportation network, which we've discussed at past meetings. Um also have discussed flood control and storm drainage um projects. Um and parks and rec um improvements um that we've been discussing. At previous council meetings here and there, so. Um with that introduction, I just uh I'll hand it over to RJ if um you wanted to give a little bit of an overview, but really again, looking forward to hearing your questions and. Um about. Both the the operating side and the capital side of our budget.
Thanks, Adam. Uh thank you, Mayor Lee, council members. Um I won't go through each line, happy to answer questions on any of them. Um but would highlight a few and and also just in general, um these dollar amounts could reflect. Design or portions of construction and I'll all kind of highlight a couple of those examples. Um so one that's fairly um new, a kickoff project, um want to do a lower Christmas tree hill, complete streets and really look at. That twenty undergrounding that we've we've discussed in the past. And then also look at further um improvements to evacuation routing and whatnot, so we hope to initiate that design this year and um. Example also of um a project that doesn't show the full scale here through the numbers. We've got central Marin regional pathways project. So it's a project we actually got um one point five million dollars in um grant funds. But since it's outside funds and not using any of our local um funding, it it just reflects two hundred and six thousand. And and actually, a lot of that would actually probably actually fall in the following fiscal year. Similarly, cost of wanting to complete streets, it's a important project, has been for many years. Um given some changes in the P G N E schedule, they have pushed their project. Um further back and therefore we are taking this opportunity to now build that project and we're shooting for next summer. So that initial six hundred thousand is kind of the portion that we see potentially falling in this fiscal year. But then will grow and to a larger number as we move into the following fiscal year. And and part of the reason, you know, we justified prior that we didn't want to build infrastructure that P G N E was going to come and tear away. Uh we still don't want to do that and we're going to thoughtfully meet with them and see what we can minimize, but. They've pushed their work far enough back that the four hundred thousand dollars in grant funds that we received. We can't get an extension to wait, so we have to move. And just, yeah, Adam touched on town hall construction. Um that's kind of the balance which we um. Are on schedule to complete by the end of the calendar year, at the very end of December. And then the only other one I want to just highlight is, um you know, in light of all the discussion about um sports field, we we've kind of. Initiated a pilot upgraded maintenance program and. Looking at investing about thirty-five thousand dollars more than we have in prior years, so. Um that involves additional aeration, additional fertilizer, additional soil amendments. And um you know, some of the comments we've heard, they they have improved, but um. There's still limitations, so.
Yeah, and the other one just to note, of course, is the Temofias Overcrossing Project that we've had a lot of conversations about. Um. You know, the far left-hand side is the total budget amount. The other columns represent the sources of funds, how they would um. Be paid for and then you can see on the on the far right-hand side is the quarter of their sales tax. Which is our local three quarters cent sales tax measure, which has been built up a little bit over the last couple of years. Um and so we're. Uh the expenditures there, eight million dollars, but we still are keeping, I I think it's the two point five million dollar reserve of that fund as well. Well, in in place and so not not going further into that. Um and so.
Yeah, yeah, and on that, I mean, just to show the the value of the dollar, um I don't have the exact number, but that's a forty-plus million dollar project where quarter Madera. Is generously, you know, contributing three million, but. Four million dollar product that's primarily funded by Cow Trains and others.
Right. And so with that, really, I think we uh are are going to. Open this up for questions from the council and um. You know, just with the caveat that if there's anything in particular that uh really we would. Love to consult Daria on, we will get back to you on that, but um. Hopefully that provides a good overview of the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Thank you. Thank you. That was fantastic. So let's open it up for questions. Uh anyone want to go first?
I'll go first?
Yeah, it's. I just I just have a couple of.
Questions. Um so um I was looking at the, and this is just sort of a curiosity. Of at um the certificates of participation that were are part of the financing of the um. The town hall and I looked at, I looked it up online. I just Google what they are and it doesn't seem to. I I'm just wondering how it relates to that type of project. Um so if someone I if anyone would like to explain how those work. How that vehicle works.
That's a good question. I mean, I I wasn't as part of that, but I essentially, I think it's purchasing some debt um. To basically finance the capital construction project. Um so I I don't know the details of exactly that structure and the financing mechanism. Can't speak to the details of it. RJ, if you happy to have you.
Yeah, I I don't quote me the exact number, but it's in the magnitude of seven and a half million dollars that were financed in a. Up for upfront lump sum that we will pay as an annuity over time. And then the remainder was of the project was funded through. Azure F and other local ones.
Okay, all right. Yeah, Google said nothing like that.
No, yeah, it's it's a it's essentially a a lo- I mean, a long, you're taking out money basically for the upfront cost to pay now and then you're paying over time. The 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 debt on that, but but I mean, I don't know what Google says, so that's how I've interpreted what we're doing. I could tell you that's that's exactly how it's working in our budget, so.
And that was done um at a very advantageous time with respect to interest rates compared to today, so.
Right, yeah, it just mentioned that it was. Investor purchasing a share of lease revenues rather than a bond being secured. For those revenues. And so I was thinking, what's the leases, lease revenue that you would get from the town hall? That was my confusion, so.
Interesting, yeah. No, I I know we, I know it also required. Having some collateral of of actual tom- town property um put up for that, and so that's what I think we had. The firehouse, I believe, is the collateral that was sort of used to achieve that debt and get that financing at that rate, that advantageous rate.
Okay, and one other question on the um. Improvements to the turf in the park. Um is there a timeline on that now?
Yeah, so um we've already started, so our typical annual maintenance would involve, or at least historically has involved uh one. Aeration in the winter, so you know, doing the core plugs and loosening the soils and then adding um. Seed or fertilizer and we, in the past, have only done that once, so we're really looking to do that um potentially three times this season. And using um a smaller. Aeration, they call pencil tines, almost like you may see on a golf course, so you can. We're going to do the 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 classic plugs now because we have enough time for that material to kind of dissolve into the grass without it affecting play. But we'll likely potentially do it one more time mid-play or just before play using a smaller. Tine that that goes into the ground so that um it doesn't impact. And then we'll also be doing more fertilizing, more seeding, almost monthly fertilizing. And like I said, three aeration events versus one.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions.
And and I, if I could just come on on the town hall, I wanted to add on, so um built into a lot of these upfront costs, um right, we're doing the zero net energies, you're in at carbon. Previous estimates were those were going to save us anywhere from around fifty thousand dollars a year in, you know, energy bills, so over time it's going to, you know, really. Pay dividends and then uh similarly, um some of the um security and. Um other features have a ten-year service and 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 the alarm system have a ten-year service and warranty built in. So in the past, we have paid either, you know, annual or monthly bills on those and we will not because that's built into the um original price.
Okay, I just have a a couple of questions um. As to whether or not we have enough set aside for a couple of uh key things. The first one, I think, town hall. We're still waiting for a presentation on those great budget busters known as finishes, fixtures and furniture. And I want to make sure we have enough set aside so that we're not cutting corners there. I mean. The decisions that we make are going to be around for a long, long time and I. I don't want to go high-end luxury, but I want to make sure that we have enough contingency for those, so my question is, i- is there adequate? Uh contingency for those. It looks like, I mean, on this main budget, it says zero for town hall i- in next year and I'm um. Just wondering if if we've got that covered. Do you want to hear both questions first or you want to go one at a time? Why don't we, why don't I stop there? You know, I just I I just know from building houses in Marin, those are the things that throw budgets way out of whack. Um so.
Yeah, so um first on um timing the furniture. As of now, we're hoping to get in the building by the end of the year and then move staff in potentially in January, but I think worst case that slides a month depending on. How things fall with the holidays and it's just a challenging time to get a lot done because of the amount of days off. We are planning to present um that to you all at the next meeting. Um at a minimum, a um several exhibits showing costs, concepts of the furniture and also um. A a range of costs, so we'll be able to answer that in more detail um at the next meeting.
And and not just furniture, right? We're talking finishes and fixtures, lighting, all the.
Yeah, no.
All the interior design stuff.
You know, RJ gathered a team, our our existing team, but also added a interior designer to our team just recently, just to help us. You know, almost peer review and sort of have a have that broader, that perspective of of how these finishes will work together, how it'll look and feel. I think we're also bringing, hoping to bring some. Images that would show the public areas and and how those would, you know, give a feeling and sense of what that looks like. So. So I think that's, we you know, we're, those are the public areas where we're focusing, I think, which is important. We want to, I agree, you know, we want to get those right. It's going to be, I I could tell you it's. It's going to be nice, but we but you know, you got to see it and you you know, you want to get it right. Um and then I think we do need to be conscious about costs and and so the the. The uh not that we're going to, you know, the office side of things though is is a different package of. Of what we're looking at. I mean, not that it's, you know, it's office furniture and it's going to be what you typically would see. It's a, we were using uh buyers and providers, but we're not going to go to the high end on. On furnitures um and and the uh expend additional costs there, so.
So you think there is sufficient.
Oh.
Contingency for.
Yeah, maybe you could speak to the budget.
Yeah, I mean, um we I I've been hearing along the way that the amount we've set aside. Yeah, I mean, we I I've been hearing along the way that the amount we've set aside is appropriate. And I'm told that by the next week I'll have a draft set of slides to look through and a range of costs. So we're we're on the cusp of having some of that information more accurate.
And and so a lot of this also is being put, if you want to look at the equipment fund. Some of this, we put a one point one million dollar into the equipment fund this year on top of, I think, the existing funds that already are there. A large part of that is really for the a couple of vehicles, the vacuum truck and the sweeper. We might get, hopefully get another new, nice, I like the blue. I know everyone loves the the blue sweeper out there. But that's a lot of what that's for. But as we've talked about in the past, that's also for a fund for furniture, our fixtures, cybersecurity. So the security system that is going to be paid out of that fund. So that's why you don't see it in the hard cost constructions. It's in that other fund there.
Yeah, it's in the technology fund and I can't remember if it was last week or the meeting before, we were talking about that item. But yeah, like I said, every everything that we're hearing, we've set aside appropriate money. Our product manager, construction manager does a lot of these projects. He's just finished one in Atherton. And for a similar sized complex, they spent two hundred fifty thousand on furniture. Now we've budgeted roughly three fifty and then also seventy five thousand for technology. So we think we're in range. We're about to find out for sure. But we'll have more for you info on the next meeting.
And and if there were to be an increase, we still have the ability to revisit it. If if there's something that that does go out of the ball, out of the.
Yeah, I think that's where we would, yeah, you know, discuss, have discussed what the options are. And we'll again, unallocated, unassigned ending balance. In the past, we did, like last year, we did put six hundred thousand dollars of the unassigned for the ending balance from twenty one, twenty two fiscal year into, I think we call it the capital projects fund, town capital projects fund. And so that's being used this year on town hall. And so certainly that's a discussion we can have down the road.
And and some of the, for instance, like the dais and the permit counter, that's custom millwork that's already included in the construction package. Whereas things like conference tables and you know, the 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 public lounge area, that furniture, they'll be presenting a couple of options on with different price points.
And lighting as well? Is that part of this?
Lighting is was included in the original construction package. So and a lot of that has been ordered. So I don't know how much of that we currently are planning to present on lighting. We can, we can see if they can fold that in. But I think doing a swap would involve at a minimum a restocking fee or something else.
Okay, just not to take up too much time, but just my other area of question is on the Parks and Recreation Capital Fund. As you mentioned, this master plan coming to us is going to be big and there's going to be lots of wants and needs. And two hundred thousand dollars kind of doesn't seem like enough. So I'm just wondering, is it because things will be happening later, actually, beyond next year? Or or what's the?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we have obviously the restroom project coming up this, that's going to be on the tail end of this fiscal year. We have the maintenance program. I think what we were hoping to do this year was sort of what are the quick sort of things we can tackle, low hanging fruit, so to speak. And so we did actually in increase that, I think, last year that was about a hundred thousand, so or a hundred twenty. So put it up to two hundred thousand. I don't know. It's hard to know exactly what we envision or what's going to come out of it. But I think those are projects that theoretically could be quickly done and spent in this fiscal year. And then we'll reassess at the next fiscal year and next budget process about bigger needs and bigger bigger items to tackle as part of the capital improvement budget.
And and a couple of items that, you know, we're constantly getting cost info daily. And actually, we had a productive meeting last Friday about the endeavor slide. And so that project in particular is likely to reduce to sub one hundred thousand dollars. And we currently have three hundred thousand. So that's.
Is that a parks?
Um, it's a storm day site endeavor slide repair.
Oh, okay.
And so it wasn't, there wasn't time to really get that fully embedded in the budget. We'll update on on the second round. But so there's potentially two hundred thousand dollars there that we would want, you know, I think one of the needs that wasn't captured also potentially initiating some design work in for the Marina Village Levy to get something going on that project. And then the other one that I don't think is really gonna be used completely is the sidewalk program based on input thus far as we've reached out to the zones. If you've been following our our strategy there, it's a lot smaller scale. And so there's likely to be six figures left over in that. So it's pretty common. We we more often than not, and actually probably every year I've been here, we've spent less money than s budgeted. And then as we get to mid year, we find where to.
Where it needed to be.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. And just one more question. This is for you, Stacy. Is there any way to on open gov increase the contrast of the font? The light blue against the white is is kind of hard to read, even I think if you don't have older eyes.
Try printing it out.
I know, I just I just saw even on the printout.
They're already.
It's almost like, did they make this with disappearing ink so that we won't be able to read it for very long?
No, that's an accessibility issue, like the you'd be able to toggle that in Windows to basic because that's an actual right. Problem for transparency.
Yes, we can definitely change our coloring, you know, and make.
I mean, maybe navy blue if you wanted to use blue. I don't.
The only thing I think I we can't is when it turns into a link and makes it blue, that is, you know.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah, but the all the content, the actual language. Yes, we can. We can change those colors.
I'll hit RJ up first. You're easier. No offense, Adam. You have two hundred seventy five thousand here for the Echo Path Connector. Can you just tell us more about the project? Because I know we walk there all the time. David Bell mentioned earlier, part of that's, does that mean the whole thing's going to get done wider?
So it's actually it's actually from an engineering standpoint and from a cost standpoint, a very simple project. What makes it challenging is that it's on California Department of Fish and Wildlife land. We have an easement, a flood easement over it. So we just needed a minor design contract to get it to fifty percent and less than twenty thousand dollars. And then staff will do all the plans specs from there. But we needed something we can take to CDFW and say, okay, what type of agreement do we need to enter into? We've had some verbal conversations. So that's really the hang up. They could want the whole formal acquisition process, which could take a while, or they could do it via letter. And then that would be more streamlined. But it is the intent to connect it completely with a class one multi use path, potentially ten feet wide.
Okay, some more to come.
Yeah.
I may have missed it. Is a Paradise Drive project in here? Are we? Okay.
Yeah. So we are looking to just continue final design, but not construct. We still have utility coordination, which takes a while. We have to move some utility pools. So we're actually looking at as early as twenty five, potentially summer twenty six, more likely.
Okay. And then I know the fields are, it's a pilot program. What's the plan B? And what's the timing to run a pilot program? Because I know Parker, we talked about this since like two thousand eighteen, nineteen. So again, what's the timing if it doesn't work? Or and I'm sorry, to add to that, what's your confidence level that it will work?
Yeah, why? We've already seen that it is. It looks a lot better than it did last year. And that's all of the strategies we're doing on the maintenance side, plus the lifting of a lot of the drought restrictions was really one of the the huge ones. Or, you know, based on the amendments you've already put down, they're saying you don't need more amendments. You're all good. But it's just seed and fertilize, seed and fertilize, and then aerate more often. So we think it'll significantly improve, but those weed areas are a problem. And there's two options. One of the commenters made it is applying a pesticide or digging it down likely eight inches, which probably is not something we can do between now and the soccer season in order to get it to kind of blend all together. And the reason I say pilot is, you know, I think we were able to identify some funds for this pilot. But if this becomes the norm, then I think there's a bigger conversation about fees for the surf program or, you know, various sports programs and how that all kind of is funded. So.
Okay, all right, thanks. And then on town, town hall project, just on a high level. Do you know what dollar amount we're up to and how much contingency we have left?
Yeah, I don't have the exact number. I know when I was here last, it was, I think, mid six. We've since purchased all of the security access, access controls and hardware. So that was around one thirty. And then we may have also, we have some ongoing unforeseen soil issues that have just kind of been every month, we we get another bill form and those have gone. So we are, we are closing in on the original contingency amount. But last or a couple of meetings ago, we increased that by, I believe, two hundred fifty thousand. So.
So there's just still contingency money left then funding?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And then, good, thanks. You're done. No. Adam, hey, can you go back over on on the salaries where they they went up like seven hundred and some odd thousand or so? Because you mentioned something about seven FTEs.
Yeah.
But those are existing positions, right? There's only one that we're filling. Can you just explain that a little bit in more detail so we get better understanding?
Yeah, sure. So I mean, I, you know, so the big one is the basically the five percent of that, two hundred twenty thousand of that is really the increase in salary cost to ST two. And this is something I did discuss after our conversation on this one with Daria. So I did touch base with her and she was looked into it. But, you know, so two hundred twenty thousand of that is increased salaries on the ST two side, which really will find its way back into the town's operating budget, basically. And explains that. And I should mention, we're we're not doing the the SD two budget this evening. You know, we're going to be doing that in two weeks and we can go further into the ST two budget and you'll see that there. In addition, we have the 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 three percent increase July first, we do have some step increases which happen, which account, I don't know, the dollar amount count, three percent, I think, is. I want to say it's a maybe a hundred and I'm not, I'm not, it's between a hundred and fifty and I had two hundred thousand, I believe, is what Daria said. And then we have the step increases, some promotions. And then this other full time employee that we were, that we are budgeting for, which is another three percent of that total number. I was trying to make reference, I think, the way it's explained in the budget message is that essentially we, if you'll see the last year, the salaries would have been higher, would have shown up as higher. So if there weren't the vacancies in the fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty three. And so the actual percentage of, where you want to say seven hundred fifty, would have looked a little bit, I think, differently in terms of the actual percentage increase. So and that's, that's generally the the story there. And so by filling those vacancies, they are budgeted for, but it's also part of it of what happens when they're, if they're filled, if they weren't vacant last year, you would have seen again, the the mid year, it would have been a higher number. So I, that's, does that help? I mean, the the bigger portion of it are the other things that I mentioned, the the SD two budget, the three percent step, the step increases, the promotions and the new full time employee are is the bigger portion of that. But.
So I'm just making up numbers, say about six hundred thousand is due to, I want to say, normal course of business, salary increases, money going to SD two, that kind of stuff. Again, I'm not, I'm just throwing out, it's a rough guess.
I can come back and we can give you a little bit more concrete on that. But yeah, I think that's about right.
Okay. And how many FTEs last fiscal year and how many we're expecting this fiscal year?
Yeah, so we we're really only increasing by one FT. So we're forty three. I think we actually labeled it as forty two point five. But I think we're counting that as a full time employee this year. And we're adding the project manager position. There's some, there's within, and this gets to reorganization, there's going to be some movement within the organizations. And so, for example, the superintendent position is going to be one that we're going to fill, which isn't, wasn't filled last year. But it actually is, the intention is not to actually add then somebody to backfill a position. It's not going to be a new person, put it that way. It was intended to be a promotional opportunity.
Okay, the hotel tax, can you just talk about that a little? Because if Best Western gets demoed and Marriott comes in, obviously, there's going to be a period where.
Right. I mean, I think the good news is, is actually we've seen the T O T tax, transient occupancy tax increase above our expected projections the last couple of years. So I think we're up to about eight fifty or nine hundred thousand dollars. And but that's true. I mean, there's going to be, I think, the Best Western brings in probably, I want to say three hundred fifty to four hundred thousand. It's in one of the tables, but I think that's about the range in transient occupancy tax. And so obviously during construction, there's not going to be any tax received there. Interestingly, I did notice that the Marine Suites actually through, I believe, someone, maybe some of the renovations, but they're doing, they're pulling in more T O T tax than Best Western or equal, which was not always the case. So I was happy to see that. And then we do also have finally getting that the smaller project, but it's still twenty two new new rooms that will bring in some additional T O T tax that will help offset at least a little bit of the, I think, it's a hundred and ten, hundred and ten rooms over at the Best Western right now. But getting that one up and and operating, I think, will, they're obviously going to raise the rates and that's going to be a new revenue stream. And the other thing that I will say, and this is where, you know, just looking at sales tax and having to offset that. I do think I was looking and we were talking to our advisors on we are expecting total wines to open up, which is currently not a revenue source for the town, but total wine's about nineteen, twenty thousand square feet. And I just happened to ask them, I say, as you know, what we might expect for a twenty thousand square foot total one? And they, it's happy to hear is upwards of like a hundred twenty five, two hundred fifty thousand in in sales tax. So, you know, those are good things to think about potentially offsetting some of those. But I, we do need to plan for that. It's probably going to be at least, I would say, two years of construction. So.
Okay, thanks. And then can you talk about the Park Madera Center? Because it looks like there's a almost one point five million deficit. If I can remember, it's a book entry. It's not.
That's gonna be, I think that's gonna be a, goes beyond my level. It's going to be a Daria sort of, let's follow up on that one. But I know there's a lot of history there. I don't want to misstate anything because it'll be taken the wrong way. But but yeah, I I recall it's essentially on the books and we wanted to track it. But it's, it's, you know, the deficit is really just showing how much the general fund has had to sort of offset the deficit at that property over in previous years. But up in, I think, the last several years, I want to say maybe the last four or five years, we've actually been revenue neutral at that site, if not making a little bit of money. And that's this, that's where we are today with that property.
Okay. And the last one for other pension liabilities, I keep wanting to call it OPEC, but I know it's not OPEC.
We're not paying OPEC.
Did we budget six, an additional six hundred thousand for that? Or did I misread?
That's correct.
And then the other question is, if I read by putting a six hundred thousand, we're fifty nine percent funded in that for the other pension obligations?
I will get back to you. I think you probably read that right, but I'll confirm that that's, that's where we are in that. Those those funds I know also will change year to year. So for example, on the pension debt, we were seventy five percent funded. You know, based on the actuarials, I think this last year, and that's why we're not putting anything in this year. But it it will change. I think we're expecting to come down into the fifties range. Um, but it, it will change. I think we're expecting to come down into the fifties range. Um, next year, so uh, but I, we can get you that number back of what that um, OPEC number is.
And if you can get the percentage, cause that's, some reason I think last budget, we were around seventy percent funded.
Okay.
Put plus or minus, so it seems like it's going that way.
Yep, and that's, that's going to be the, the market. You know, the, the poor market returns essentially on our um, investments there.
Okay, thanks. The good news is I don't have any more questions. I didn't meet with Adam today for about an hour and a half, so he has all the other ones. I'm an inquisitive mind.
Well, I also uh, appreciate when you've asked many questions that you still have ones that you'd like to share with the public too. Because ultimately, daylighting through questions is a great strategy to just make people aware. So, thank you.
Yeah, if I could just circle back on one that just jogged my memory, um. Yeah, if we were to look at a, on the sports turf side of things to do those. Dig out repairs, uh, it was in the neighborhood of eighty thousand dollars. So something to think about as we move into the next round of budget discovery discussions.
All right, so everyone else done? Okay, so uh, I'm conflicted because I, I pseudo want to make statements, but also questions in, in this. Because part of it is, is we have a new town manager, but in general, uh, the way that it's presented, it's also. Really a query of, usually we set policy, but like, how do we see the policy of budget setting is, in, as a question, but it's also that we also get to decide eventually, right? So it's tricky. So like for me. With the project manager position, right? Um, we see it as a cost and a budget allocation, but really. Uh, do you see that as, like, can you answer, how much money does a project manager save? In execution of, of, of infrastructural projects, right? Cause I can, I, I think I get a good sense of it, cause I do it a lot, but. Um, you know, and, and like, how do you account for that, right? How do you, how do you understand that? It's only seen as a negative, but. As we, as RJ has been discussing, it's like, you know. I brought in thirty million by spending three, right? And in general, it like, how do you quantify and really, like, that's the whole thing about the budget, right? Is where, is there a way that we could ever really highlight? Critical investment that basically pays back tenfold, spend money to make money, right? Type approaches. Well, you know, is there ways to basically highlight that?
Um, a general baseline for infrastructure projects using kind of the Caltrans method is. Design is usually between ten to fifteen percent of the overall project costs. And construction management is about fifteen percent of the overall project costs. And so. If this person is delivering over a million dollars in projects, we're saving a lot of money.
In just one project, but you just said we're delivering like ten million dollars of infrastructure every year. Plus, and if we do it cheaper, then we can even build more.
Yeah, right. So. Yeah, and I think I, I wasn't going to go into it because I know uh, Todd went over and did this exercise last year, which was great, but, but it was about the building. Division and turning sort of our contracting. Monies, which we were, we were spending on consultants and contractors. And, and basically turning those positions and those costs into um, in-house staff, which obviously is going to, you're going to see on the salary side, but. But ultimately, it's about saving money. Um, we're still frankly building out that vision. Um, but that, that, I think he showed that, you know, basically the cost last year of. What we were doing, which was sort of hiring out our plan check services and having a, you know, a. Um, consultant permit tech when our, our, our actual staff person was out on leave, that was, you know, a couple of weeks here and there. All these services, which still charge a pretty high rate. Um, um, not only are they higher in cost, but they also don't deliver sort of that. Customer service and the, and, and aren't really part of our team the same way. And so that's. That's part of it as well, is just bringing people um, on board that have the same vision and, and same attitude towards our community and wanting to deliver great projects and, and also. Um, also at the end of the day, you know, hopefully growing within our organization, as I mentioned before, so that's part of it.
Yeah, and, and I guess that's where, I, I wish there was ways to, because we're not always going to have, like, the culture is always going to shift, we're always going to have different people up here, right? And those kind of legacy understandings, unless they're continually brought up and reinvigorated or memorialized in a way. Could be lost to, you know, the future. So it, it is that, you know, uh, is just kind of how do we encapsulate those understandings? Cause I think we've really benefited from those over the years. Um. So, so the other one is, you know, and I think you touched on it, right? I think during. The strategy early on, it was, you know, if we're going to go with the natural turf, right? That I thought you had said maybe anticipated maybe sixty thousand, right? Now we're at thirty-five. May, maybe I misunderstood that, but is thirty-five enough, given all the feedback and, and even these more advanced things or, or like? Is that, and you don't have to answer it now, is that something that should be considered further? Would you like more time and basically come back with a, a better analysis on that one line item?
Yeah, I, I think we were talking about bringing something next meeting, but um, I think when we were talking about. The fifty-five number, that was over the course of a full year, which we've already invested about twenty-five or twenty thousand. So this would be kind of the balance of that fifty-five estimate.
Okay, so, so it is that you, it is net sixty, but the, so is this above and beyond that, or is this, this is just allocating that much more to it? Because it was a pilot, you basically had a.
This is like the second half of that.
Okay.
Fifty-five, sixty K pilot.
Right.
And then beyond that, if you wanted us to explore more funds for. Grading digouts, localized repairs, then, then that's the eighty thousand on top of it that we would have to look into, and I'll give you more concrete numbers.
And if you bring that forward, you have to basically say it's already in there and you're going to approve it, or is it that like, like a A or B? Like either this is what you would get with it, this is what they, like, you know, that was. One of the things Todd talked about was that these were supposed to be dynamic number, like, adjustments that we could actually make. Real-time decisions on those kind of things in the future with this type of budgeting tool, right? Back in the day.
I mean, it's interesting. I mean, I think there's, there are going to be opportunities, I think. Um. One is, I mean, that is something where I think. We have this two hundred thousand dollars in the capital projects, you know, budget for. In addition to um, the maintenance, but that is going to be discussed as part of an op, you know, the, the master plan program. So coming out of that, if we want to discuss using monies for that purpose, in the next fiscal year, that could be a project we, we put it to. We do have points along the way to add to it. And like RJ's saying also, priorities change during the year, some of these projects. Aren't, for whatever reason, get pushed back. I mean, things happen, and so you are, while you still have the total amount budgeted in your budget, you. You need to sort of repurpose it. And, and those, you know, those um. I think could happen with enough, I mean, it's certainly something we would want to.
It's, so my only other question about the budget is, and, and also Parks and Rec, the, the master plan. The largest stakeholder user of the park that is continually discussing this, and. What I hear is they have issues with the field, not how much it costs to use the fields. So like, you know, if there could be, i- if basically there is this, uh, is that. That doesn't become a future budget item, then does it? Or it gets tight, our, but if you increase the fees because we're providing better services. Which they're happy to do per, per, maybe, right? That then really the whole budget goes up and the expenditure goes up, right? So it's a, it's a wash, it's not really a, a negative on the overall ability for us to provide services across the board, right? Is that, that's what I had heard, I think could be a possibility to explore as well. And, and, and that's, that's a, is that a fee thing that would go through Parks and Rec and evaluated? Is that part of the master plan or is that part of a fee schedule, right? Like?
It's just, it's just timing. I mean, I think all these things hit at different points, so the fee schedule does get discussed.
Right, but so in the aggregate, I think it can get lost in, in, and just continue to, to churn where I get. We get letters that say it's not churning fast enough for the thousand kids that signed up this year, right? And so that's where it's like, I guess, that's where they're coming to the council now to talk about.
Well, right.
To make budget decisions.
I mean, I think we already made the decision for what we're doing this, this year, this summer. And so it's not like you can pivot. It's sort of like, uh, the next cycle will be, well, we could have the discussion again, so yeah, you know, learn from what we've done and then decide whether we need to go take it up to the next level. And that's, there's points.
Right, methodology, like, the budget doesn't talk about next year is the methodologies in which we could pivot on the fly, right? So as much like, or maybe it does, like, you know, maybe contingencies do allow that, and we are able to do that.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't, and if I may, um, so I think when I think of. Fields and the baseline, I don't look at the baseline being twenty twenty-one, I look at the baseline being. Eighteen, nineteen, when we weren't in a drought, right? And so because we went through some drought years, the field suffered. This pilot program is getting us back to or slightly better than that pre-drought condition. And then beyond that, if council wants to contribute more, you know, we can weigh out some options.
Well, the other thing is, is it, is the cat, like, it's also the narrative that we're providing, right? Is it that we're contributing more, we're making a decision to take away from one or the other, or is it that the? Biggest stakeholder is willing to basically provide the feel, like, provide the, the, the backing. And so, so, but that's not a budget decision, right? And that's not something that comes to us, that's just a question of staff talking to them and, and Parks and Rec. But so I don't want to belabor this, right?
Like, I think to your bigger point, though, we can, we can pivot if we need to, you know.
Yeah, so, so, you know, the, going back to OPEB, Cowpinch, all this stuff, right? Like, we used to during the budgets really focus and dive down on those and, and we got it all kind of squared away. But it is that even last year and the year before, there was an anticipation of a downturn in which we would have to compensate. We got that money very cheap to basically pay down those, right? Um, so my fear is, is what's the cost of not being conservative? You know, if, it basically cash is really expensive, right? We, we can sit on it, we can pay down the OBT, we don't have to, you know, like. It was always at least the last administration, right? The last town manager would always, that would be the highest priority and, and talk about as though. That would be the highest and best value, right? And, and I'm not. Seeing that discussion, so part of it is, is, is that a, is that still like an understanding? Or is it just that we're not really at that place or, or we have secured that, and so therefore it's, it, it's not the same dial? I'm just saying, I, I, it's been a little bit different than in previous budget.
Understood, understood. It's, I mean, it's in, it's in here, I think it's a key message. Again, I'm trying not to, you know, I, I think it's good feedback. It's certainly a high priority. I did focus on the, you know, the pension reserve was a big, um, that's two million dollars that we set aside, so I think. It's still very much a focus and.
Yeah, but so do you feel that's a conservative number? Do you feel like that's just the number that's common sense, right? Like, is the, so, yeah, I mean, I guess my thing is, is if it's. If it's just what you expect, then like, is there a danger in that? Will, will it cost us more money if we weren't conservative, right? Cause it was always the more conservative approach actually saved us money.
I think, I think what you're, what we're trying to manage right now is, is more um, uncertainty. And so that's where um, it becomes key to have cash on hand or a trust or an ability to sort of, when. You have volatility and from one year to the next, the um, uh, the funding of these different. Liabilities essentially can spike or, or, you know, this year we're, we're overfunded, next year we're, we're.
Yeah.
Next few years, we're going to be underfunded, you know, and so. I, you know, we do have advisors for that, so I mean, I, I trust that their advice and, and our. We talk to our finance committee as well, and I think we're in. You know, good places there um, with uh, and makes sense to it, to um, listen to their, their advice on, on where to be. And we'll continue to do that. And so it certainly is. It is, um, you know, I, I fully admit, like, this is an area that I'm, I'm getting up to speed on and may, maybe don't have the same. Um, knowledge base yet, um, but I, you know, I, I know how critical it is. It's something that's constantly discussed amongst.
Well, it's also been resolved to some degree, right?
So, so. Well, it has, we are in a great, I mean, look, we're, yes, we've been set up, we're in a great spot to be um. Where we are, and I think it's just continuing on that trajectory. And so it's, the, the path has sort of been set.
Thanks for answering the question about that you're taking in all those same sources that have been.
Absolutely.
Passed, and it doesn't cause you the same. Like anxieties that it caused previously, because those anxieties ultimately resolve the issues, right? But like, now that they're resolved, it's still that they're outlying. And, and the other, the other reason I ask is. There were opportunities to get ahead in payments and pay down larger, like. Twenty, thirty-year debts or, or, oh, you know, these pension liabilities and other things. And it was, it was always a priority to continue to do that. But I do hear, hey, we've got some real capital expenditures coming up, right? And so it's like, where have we basically gotten ahead of that and understood that we're going to pull back on that kind of aggressive paydown? Versus, you know, build out of, of, of facilities. And, and so that's like at a larger level. That's what I'm interested in is, is, is that really what's happening? Is there going to be a balancing act on that now?
It is, and I think we've been balancing and I, and I certainly feel. Um, appreciative that, yeah, I'm stepping in here in this situation where. Some good decisions have been made over the past many years uh, by the town council. You know, to, to take those essentially monies off the table and put them into really the, the future financial. Um, well, for the future financial benefit of the town. And again, this is about like setting those future leaders up for success. So I, you know, it's, that's all, that's been first, I think, and for many years, it's still going to be first. Like, we always have to keep our eye on the ball down the road of where. Um, what our costs and expenditures are, that's, it's going to change. So we're looking at that. And, and at the same time, I think we're knock on wood, you know, we, we've also made good decisions that allow. Us to fund and a more robust capital um, uh, program as well, including. You know, frankly, a town hall and take advantage of rates um, when they were low, you know, for, uh, for that. And, and, and so. Um, you know, we are set up and it's just a matter of continuing to um, uh, have those same processes in place. Um, and, and the same sort of perspective that we've had in the past, and so.
Or it could be different, but I just will need.
Well, no, I, I think it, that's, that's the intention, I'll tell you right, right now, you know, that's, that's, I feel good about. It's, uh, you know, how we're set up. Obviously, Daria is a big part of that as well. Unfortunately, she's not here, she could speak to that. Um, but, um, but yes, I think it's, it's a more of a continuation than an abrupt change we need to make or anything like that.
Right. Um, and then I had here is a question, but once again, this is somewhere in between. Uh, the Casa Buena Complete Streets, like, we're moving forward with that as a build and it's in that, this next fiscal year project. While I understand it's, it's nice to consider PG&E, the other thing is, is if we are going to build that infrastructure with the idea that they're going to come in and it like. We should be, I wonder if there's ways to protect and make sure that it's built back to the, to, to the basically at new. Uh, level that we had just instituted based on the fact that they refused to be, uh, uh, address our scheduling, right? Like that, and that's not a, that's not totally budget, but it will impact our budget if we can, you know, if we have to come back after that. But at this point, it's this weird thing where, you know, really, the budget's the budget, then when we do it is, but. The residents have been asking and now they're starting to demand and, and, and getting very upset that it isn't happening, so it has to happen. But it, we also want to protect it so that they have the infrastructure there for a long time. So like, how do you do that? It's not really a budget thing, but it, if, it, it goes back to the bottom line of all the monies, right?
Yeah, so the, the plan is to construct it in next spring, summer. So the six hundred that's showing is that portion that could fall within this current fiscal year we're talking about. But then in the next fiscal year, it'll be a likely a seven-figure number, I think. That project's estimated somewhere around two to two point five million, so that's going to grow as we go into the next fiscal year. Um, on one hand, our standards and policies are going to protect us from any damage PG&E does. But at the same time, all of us pay into PG&E, and so. Even if the town as, by itself is protected, if we're just wasting money and PG&E is having to pay for something a second time. That doesn't do us anything as ratepayers PG&E. So we want to meet with them, be strategic about it, you know. See what options we have. Maybe there's a critical section and that piece of just asphalt gets skipped or something like that.
I understand that, but ultimately, you know, these are transmission lines that cut through our town that feed Tiburon and Mill Valley and Sausalito. So I, there, it, to me, it's those ratepayers that are delaying the project. And uh, you know, my thing is, is we have constituencies where, where, where my residence is and where I get voted in. And they have said very clearly, they want this project to move forward. And so like. At, at some point, I just would like to know that we're going to stop considering and, and. We give them what the expectation is, right? Like, i- if they, if, if they're not willing to, to discuss it, then I don't know how accommodating at some point we should be. From a budget and an execution standpoint.
It's on the work plan for next summer.
Right, um. So yeah, so the Casa Buena was one, and then the final one is for Rebecca, is that a citizen provided photo on the entry page?
Uh, on the, uh, budget page?
On the budget page, that intro of the fog and the, and the mountain.
I, I was trying, I think I know exactly where that was.
Right there. Is that actually like provided by one of our residents and is actually?
I just, I just pulled it.
Oh, I, I hope, I was hoping you were saying yes, because it's beautiful.
It's beautiful.
I would happily take
I just wanted to end on that lighter note. Okay. So with that, uh, 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 did you have any other questions after? Okay. Close, uh, the questioning up here and open it up to the public comment. Seeing none in the public. Is there anyone online?
Yeah, four people online, but they don't have hands raised and Yeah, while I'm checking, oh, sorry, I have my other No emailed public comment and looking again, looks like there's no hands raised.
Okay. Um, so with that, uh, I'll close public comment and I'll bring you back to the dice for any final comments, direction.
I just want to say to Daria, you were missed tonight. I could see it on Adam's face. Um, best wishes that you get better soon. We have come a long way since George Gorman's abacus and his hand penciled spreadsheets. Um, so thank you so much for the amazing professionalism here. Uh, I know we are the envy of many towns, uh, especially because of our 20% reserves. That was never a case that we had that. And the fact that that's there now is, uh, really, uh, really feels good. So just thank you for all your work. Thank you.
And, um, I'd like to applaud, uh, the new tool that we have. It was, it's really great. I love going, clicking on and seeing the actual proportions, uh, of, uh, the different expenses on the various pages. I think that's very enlightening. And, um, I just appreciate all the work that everyone's done to, uh, bring this to us. And, um, uh, I guess, I guess I did have like, so one, I know we're not in questions, but just, so the real time updating is basically watching things like, you know, are we spending? Have we spent all the reserves yet? Or have we spent, how much of the budget have we spent on a particular item? That, those are the updates that we'll be getting.
So you're talking about the, um, all the reporting that is intended to update nightly. It pulls in any updates, any transactions, all the activity. So if you're looking at a report that shows, um, you know, bu- budget to actuals, it'll have whatever the budget is with the, you know, through the night before update with all the actuals. And, um, so yeah, the intention is that it is, um, pulling that data in nightly. But as I said previously, I have been troubleshooting some technical issues. So, but that is how it is designed to work.
Great, great. Well, thanks again for putting it together.
In addition to Dory, I want to thank Stacy and also Donna. Um, you guys pulled through. I think, uh, Adam was totally stressed. Um, and I think maybe you, you relieve some of the stress, but you guys did a great job with the whole thing. And RJ, thanks also because you always add a lot of color. Um, you're totally factual and you're on top of things. So I appreciate all that. I think overall the budget is financially sound. Um, the good news is there's no deficits. There's no layoffs. So that's all good news. Um, just a couple of semi concerns, not red flags, just yellow type flags. When I look at the numbers, it looks like for this year, revenue's flat and expenses are up over a million. Um, by the time we throw in the 760 police and fire, there's a couple of other things in there. You know, if that trend continues, um, eventually that's going to catch up to us. I always worry about the pension liability, um, down the road, but I realize that that is a balancing act. But I just, just me being fiscally conservative when it comes to pension liability. The, um, other pension, the OPEC, OPEB, OPEB. But that one just has me a little concerned also because I see a downward trend, trend again. I think it was 70%, now 60%. If I heard you right, it's going to 50%. Um, sometime this year, you may want to consider coming back to us with a policy on that, that we target. I'm just going to throw a number that could be open for discussion with council. But just starting to point out, we're targeting 80%. And if you can double check also, because I think most towns are a hundred percent funded on their OPEC, but I could be incorrect on that. Not on pension liability. They're completely out of whack. Couple of other comments, park and rec, I'd like to see the 200,000 if you can bumped up to 300,000. I think it sounds like some of these other projects, I know you're conservative RJ, so it's not a criticism. If some of these other projects, it sounds like they may be a little bit overfunded. If you can gather another 100,000 in there, I think we're going to need that money down the road either this year or next year. And if I have this correct for park and rec tying it back to the master plan, basically these projects are going to be split into two categories, right? CIP projects, which are going to be, will probably require a, a lot more funding and longer term. And then this fund that we're talking about with hopefully a 300,000, that'll be the more short-term fixes. And I think it will help park and rec drive their conversation when they come back to us with recommendations. Um, and I also would like to see on the park and rec side that their part of the budget gets presented to them. So they have an understanding of where their numbers are coming from and how they derive, which again, that ties back into the master plan. And then just the last comment, I agree with Pat again. If you can just blow up the font or change the font, because I was at home the other day with the light like this and I started using a flashlight and my reading glasses. And, um, I started blowing it up on my computer and it was like, it wasn't too bad, but yeah, thanks. But again, overall, you guys did a great job. So thanks.
Okay. So, um, you know, it, outside of naming you and saying, oh, it's great. We don't have a budget issue. Some other towns and, you know, as the mayor, I go to these other events in the regional and they talk about these kind of meetings and the council going to two in the morning recently. You know, and other, and having a history of having to do those and having many, many people just really upset about the stewardship of, of the town finances and stuff. And it's a real blessing, right? It's really difficult to go, uh, there and it is. So it, it isn't just that I thank you. It's, it's, you know, it makes it, uh, a worthwhile endeavor to be able to sit up here versus, you know, a very, very difficult conversation and decision-making that can really impact all of our relations with our neighbors, right? And everything else. So it's sort of like, it's, 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 it's really, really important to get it right. Um, and so I really appreciate it to all of you, the new and the old that have worked towards the goals to, to have the success. And, uh, yeah, I don't have any additions other than kind of just a, a general question. Does staff feel like, based on the overall feedback and everything that you have enough, um, to proceed and then come back to us? Or is there anything that still needs clarifications that you would want answered?
No, um, I don't think we have any. We have a couple of cleanups. It looks like on the capital, um, projects table, uh, or chart. And then, uh, but other than that, I'm, I think we're have enough feedback to, to take this back, um, at the next meeting for approval.
Okay. So no vote or anything. So we, we can move on to the next item then. Okay. All right. So with that, we'll close, uh, the, um, the public hearings and we'll move on to item number six, the business items. Uh, so business item six A. Oh, thank you very much. Do you, I mean, do you need, do you need a minute to?
Leave.
Donna, you don't want to go till 2 AM. I saw your face on that mention.
Be safe.
Thank you.
It's all right. It's recorded. Cheers. Uh, and just Rebecca, are you going to return to the table? Okay. So this is the, uh, business items, item six A. This is to discuss and consider assistant town manager classification, job description, establishing a salary range. Uh, is there a staff report?
Absolutely, absolutely. This is another good one and one I'm excited about. Just to get the housekeeping out of the, out of the way, this is a two meeting, uh, business item. So it's a discussion this evening and then, we can, um, bring this back. I think that the options are in front of you on the recommended, recommended action. Um, we're recommending to prove the creation of the assistant town manager classification, or I am approved job description for the assistant town manager and establish the salary range of $12,454 to $15,137 per month, which is the same, um, salary range. Um, that is currently, um, provided for the town clerk assistant town manager. That's the current salary range that exists. So yes, this is, um, an exciting topic that involves some of our colleagues in the room this evening, um, sitting to my left. Um, and really is, is sort of the culmination of I, uh, a long process that actually started even before I started as um, interim town manager almost, almost a year ago now. So, um, but it's sort of, uh, wrapped up in the need to really, um, create a new assistant town manager. Uh, town, um, sorry, assistant town manager classification and this job description, which we currently do not have. And, and in fact, um, what was created and what is currently on our salary, salary schedule and the job description that we currently have was really created for Rebecca when she was started as town clerk and has done such a, you know, an excellent job, um, climbing through the, the ranks and growing within the organization. Um, became town clerk assistant to the town manager. Um, I don't know exactly when that was Rebecca, but it was Oh, you're, okay. I didn't even realize that. And, and then, uh, ultimately made the change to take out, uh, the two in the title there and become a town clerk slash assistant town manager. So this would really just remove, um, town clerk from the title of, um, that job and that, uh, classification, retaining the same salary range. Um, and, um, obviously allow Rebecca to, uh, move into a role that is much more focused on, uh, advanced managerial responsibilities, um, which she's already been doing frankly for many, many months has been just incredibly helpful and key to my ability to, to do my job over the last year. Um, with the, just the amount of, um, organizational knowledge, um, and also just how to navigate through many of the, um, fun conversations that come across the desk all the time, day to day, um, within the town. So, um, you know, Rebecca's been performing assistant town manager duties. Um, what is great is that we have, uh, Lorena, um, Barrera, um, has, um, been trained and been training. It's this little awkward, just, yeah, having a staff report about both of individuals here. But, um, who has been, you know, taking on the town clerk duties, um, slowly but surely, um, obviously this is a very, um, significant role in the town. Um, we are very fortunate to have, um, Rebecca be able to sort of provide some of the, um, coaching and leadership and, and, and training on that end. And it is now time to really, uh, formally, um, transition the roles of our, um, uh, of our admin team and, and Rebecca and Lorena to, uh, new job classifications essentially. And so what that would mean for, would be for Rebecca would be become, you know, to become the assistant town manager. Um, and, um, and for Lorena to move up and be promoted into the, um, assistant, I'm sorry, the town clerk slash assistant to the town manager, um, job that was created back in the day for what, where Rebecca started. So I, I think it's a really wonderful way to, um, uh, not only, um, formalize the, essentially the, uh, the transition, functional transition that's been occurring over the last, uh, many months, um, if not over the last year. And, um, also, um, uh, allow for, uh, Lorena to grow into this, uh, new position. Function within the organization. I, what else did I say? You know, I, I think, um, I will, I will send my staff report there and, and see if there's any questions of the town council or if I missed anything. But I think, you know, I mentioned it earlier, this in our budget, um, item during the budget item, essentially, you know, this, this is really about, I think who we're about is, is, um, having not only people who are skilled and talented enough to sort of climb the ranks and grow within our organization. Um, but also find ways to, um, allow that growth to occur. And that may mean adjusting titles from time to time or finding the right avenues. As the same time, you know, I think the good thing here is I feel very confi- um, confident that we're not just creating positions for individuals. You know, the assistant town manager position, what this does as well by taking the, the town clerk off of that is it really allows for that position to be filled by anybody, you know, people with whatever expertise they may have in the future. And so I think organizationally, it works from that standpoint as well. That it doesn't have to be a town clerk slash assistant town manager. So, uh, in any case, that's, um, um, I'm excited to present this to you and just hear what questions and comments you all have. So thank you.
Awesome. So with that, I'll open it up for questions. Anybody?
Um, to just be kept questions or?
Currently questions. We'll take questions from the, um,
Any questions? So I have a few. So one is, uh, you know, are they like, as a assistant town man, can she assume the duties of the town manager if you go on vacation, right? Like what, like when the president dies, who's the next person? Like next in line, right?
Yes, yes. And that's already part of the responsibilities. I think that she perform, she performs, um, well, in this position performs. So, I mean,
When was that clear with the, before, when it was the town clerk as clear, uh, kind of like being able to, to basically have a backup at that higher level of operation, right?
Yeah. When I started, I mean, that was clear to me in our relationship.
They'd already, that's why they started adding those names and that no, like nomenclature, right? When, or you, that's even before, that was just when she was the assistant or, or anyone was an assistant or a clerk, a town clerk. The town clerk has that ability to then step in direct up to, to fill the town manager.
Well, I think anybody, I mean, technically it's at the, I mean, look, I think the town managers, I, I'll
I think it's good. I'm asking because I actually think it's good to, to basically be acknowledging and creating a, a situation where it's less where it's more clear.
It's clear. Yeah, absolutely. I will anecdote though, I remember three weeks after I started as a planning and building director, our town manager at the time, Mr. Bracken went to the Bahamas and he said, you are now the acting town manager for the next three weeks. So.
Right. And, and so, 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 but like in the job description, I, I didn't dig down into that. But I would think that would be an important understanding and creating that is that this gives, um, the ability to either one of them. It, it, you know, um, and we were talking about it today is, uh, at the, at the, um, chamber of commerce is there the roles might need in a, a very precarious outgoing person, person, personality type on one side. But that might not be everything to run such a well organized and large organization. Well, right? And you need someone else. They balance each other out and it shouldn't be put on one on the pedestal, but it's really this kind of team sharing, team methodology, which I, from a, like, from a personal standpoint, think is a more successful strategy.
Yeah, I, yeah. I think you'd have, I, yeah. No, but I certainly philosophically, I think, and I, you could, I mean, we could talk about this, not at this meeting, but, but certainly, um, fully embrace the, the team, um, sort of the structure that, uh, making decisions and also just, and just sort of having, um, each other.
So, so my other question to you then is, is, you know, we'd all talked about, this goes back to retention and everything else that we've been talking about and, and basically asking, can, are people willing to step up? Do you see, and have you anticipated since those discussions that we might be in, uh, exploring this in other titles, other? And have you anticipated since those discussions that we might be exploring this in other titles, other? I know we'd done it with the community development director, right? But as you try to establish what this is, is this going to be across the board modification? You kind of mentioned it, the budget, but is this the beginning of a few different positions and considerations? Or is this really a clarification of I think this one instance?
Yeah, I think it, I mean, this is a, obviously it's a, it's a, it's a title that many cities have to in their organizations with clear roles and responsibilities. Other departments, I think it's not as, unless you're a very large organization, you have like a deputy chief or something like, I mean, our public safety, they do have those, those, those structures. I don't think it's, I'm not looking right now in, in terms of I don't see those positions necessarily needed to be clearly defined in such a way right now. I mean, I think our departments, but uh, you know, I did, I did see there are opportunities still potentially, for example, in community development, there was a discussion and, and I had a thought process for a while that a planning manager, not assistant, but like a planning manager could be a role that somebody would actually elevate into at some point in time that would take some supervisory role, which doesn't exist right now below the director.
Right. It's still, by title, it gives them an understanding because sometimes they rise above the current stature, but there's nowhere else to go. So then everybody perceives that they've just flatlined, but really it's creating acknowledgement of where that personal growth really is in a job environment is, and, and so anytime you can have opportunities to do that. I think that's important, like whether it has monetary cost or not, or you know, it's, I think that it's something that, at least in my generation, it matters.
I, and I will say one thing that I, I, I don't know when we started the practice of sort of eliminating positions, but I've been very, very clear that we're not going to do that anymore. Cause I don't want to, I want those frankly to be. It's, it's a recruiting cool tool at some level to have a list of positions. They may not be filled and they may be likely, you know, many of them may be vacant, but at least it shows that there, these positions in the job descriptions exist. And we, when we have to reactivate them for the right candidate and for the right purpose and need, we're not coming back and having to the council to create the job and
Right. And in larger 25,000 person organizations I've worked in, right? They, they definitely like those toolkits because you'll get teams of individuals that have unique characteristics. And so therefore to basically create effective teams across that, you need to understand and have a lot of different like ways to, to place them and stuff. So I definitely appreciate that and would encourage you to continue, continue to see that if, you know, as a, or maybe would you like to do that? All right. So did you have any questions? No. Okay. So, so then with that, I'll, I'll close any questions on the dice and ask the public seeing them in person. Is there anyone online that would like to discuss it?
We did get an email public comment while we have Patty online. She, I asked her, she wanted me to read it, which is why I kept smiling. The comment is, have you considered a new classification of queen of Corder Madera for Rebecca?
Yeah, I, I would need to recuse myself on that one.
That is the only comment we received. We don't have any other hands raised.
All right. Well, thank you for the comment and I'll bring it back. I'll close public comment and bring it back to the dice for any final discussions. And then I'm looking for any direction. And if not, then we'll be prepared to take a second reading.
Sorry if I may. We did a similar item and we did introduce the resolution formally. So we could do
We could vote, introduce it and vote, and then the become part of the consent calendar.
It would also be a business item a second time and we would do a formal adoption of the resolution. So right now we would just be introducing the resolution that is included.
All right. So we need an introduction of it and
Yes.
Oh. So yeah, it doesn't have a number or anything yet. It's just, okay. So I could just read it straight from the subject line. Okay. I introduce the resolution to consider assistant town manager classification, job description and establishing salary range of $12,454 a month to $15,137 a month. Your second?
I'll sec.
Okay. Councilmember Casissa, Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
And Mary Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
All right. So with that, we'll close the business items and we'll move on to the council reports, town manager report.
All right. Just a couple of items wanted to, and I, I thank council member Casissa for bringing this up today because I think it is worthwhile to note just verbally to the council, just where discussions are with the discussions of potential shared services between Ross Valley Fire Department and Corder Madera, I'm sorry, Central Marine Fire Department. And so just, just by way, there's not much of an update, but just conversations are continuing amongst the managers, city managers and the chiefs of of both agencies and actually on Ross Valley, it's a deputy chief at this point. We aren't up against a deadline. I think that's the key thing to note is that you know, I can't speak for exactly how the I don't think the votes have occurred, but I think there is going to be a discussion about at the end of June is when the current contract with Marin County between Ross Valley and Marin County expires. The current chief is going to step aside, but they are going to consider the appointment of their deputy chief to interim chief while discussions continue. So it's just you know, gives more time, a little bit room to breathe and, and, but I will say it's, 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 you know, positive discussions at this point in time. And just want to thank our you know, our chief Ruben Martin for his excellent sort of work on the issue and be more to come on that in the future. A couple of fun things. I know we're, we're sort of into summertime, which is exciting. I don't know. I appreciate the council sort of thinking about, I think we'll you know, having the summer schedule, so to speak, with some, some of the meetings off. I think that's going to be really appreciated by staff and we'll all get to take some vacations here. I think hopefully you as well. We obviously are planning for fourth of July. There's probably more to talk about that. But trying to have a more organized approach. I want to thank Rebecca really for working with our chamber on sort of trying to you know, address any concerns earlier in the process and coordinate amongst all of our, our team and, and our team in a more efficient and effective way. So that's happening. I think we're going to have a great event. And the other one, just to note, we're also, we've been no carnival, but we did get an application for Circus Vargas to come back in August. So we're in the North Lot over at the village. So I think hoping that works, it works out because I know, I think it was a hit last time. And I think I think that does it for now. Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Adam. Some town council reports.
Okay. So I attended the Marin Healthy Youth Meeting yesterday and they had some interesting statistics. It was folk, the meeting was focused on overdoses in Marin. And it was amazing and frightening to find out that we lose a Marin resident to opioids, one every five days on average. And on average Marin County ambulances responded to non-fatal overdoses each day. And more than half of those overdoses in Marin are associated with fentanyl. So those are the things that they're working on with several bills in the State House. And I know I owe a number of you, Amy, some information on the things that they've been doing and I'll try to get that out to everybody this week.
Also on the subject of the health of our children and our, our population, Fred and Rosa and I all attended the Moms Demand Action Group, which was celebrating that all 11 municipalities in Marin this year voted to support the June, early, early June as being the real awareness of the need for gun legislation. And it was a pretty moving event. Hearing today's parents talk about how they fall asleep at night and this is what they have to think about. And I realized it wasn't that way when I was raising my kids. So this is a, a new thing. And it needs to become something in our past really soon. And then the other thing I attended was TAM, also sort of on the idea of our kids. There was also a safe routes to school presentation, all regarding our crossing guards and the Twin Cities Corder Madera is losing two crossing guards this year. We're losing the guard at the base of Christmas Tree Hill, which to me seems like a really important intersection. And then another one out on Paradise, which I never really got the exact location of. But I guess there's still time to sort of maneuver this. There's a really interesting thing happening in that the crossing guard program is only a $2.2 million program and they're spending $350,000 a year to evaluate which intersections should be covered. So there seems to be, you know, we could, we could buy 20 more crossing guards if we weren't paying that consultant. So I don't know where it's going to come out, but I do know it's an ongoing thing. So if anybody is concerned about it, really hang in there while we try to figure this out. It's only 25 per K to hire a crossing guard. And these are hires that are, that fulfill all the equity and inclusion, you know, they're really, they're good hires of people who really aren't often able to get other jobs, but still do a great job at that. So I think that's it. Thank you.
Thanks. I've been busy. It's been, I think, three weeks since we last met. I attended and you're going to see a pattern here. I attended MWPA, the work plan was approved for this next fiscal year as well as the budget. That's going to be the common theme because again, most of these entities are into their second budget meeting. I attended Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, which again, that budget was also approved. And that entity is doing very well financially. I think six or seven years ago, there was some financial trouble there, but that's been straightened up. So that's great there. And thank Rebecca and Lorena because our VP is actually using Corumira Town Council Chamber for their meetings. So I appreciate that. Yesterday I attended Marin Transit Board, their budget was approved. One thing to note there that came up is that during the summer, kids under the age, under the age of 18, write free. It's not just Marin Transit, Smart, Sonoma Transit, Pedaluma Transit and Santa Rosa City Buses, they all have the same program. So theoretically somebody could wind up going from Corder Madera all the way up to Santa Rosa, Sonoma for free. Attended H friendly Corder Madera, attended MCC, MC Monthly Meet, which I think all of us did. And a big thanks to Rebecca for organizing that at Restoration Hardware. I think it's going to be a tough act for any city to follow, like really tough. Tended Twin Cities Disaster Recovery, which is also yesterday. We're looking at potentially in October or so, having an insurance forum. Because a lot of people that are getting their homeowners insurance canceled due to either wildfire, or I think the latest one, State Farm in Allstate, I think they're actually not renewed, not doing new policies. So we're trying to get a panel together on that. And the last one, which is my favorite is Park and Rec Met. There was a group that came called the Scotty Lab Foundation and they actually did an event last Thursday I attended at the skateboard park. And just to give you some background, Scotty Lab was a kid, I think it was 15, excuse me, 15 or so. He died, I think in February in a skiing accident up in Tahoe and he was like really super high ranked. The parents originally lived in Tiburon, then they moved up to Palisades up there. He was a skier, skateboarder and snowboarder. So he does have connection with Skateboard Park here. They, after he died, they set up Scotty Lab Foundation. This is since February, they made a real $250,000 of a million dollars that they're shooting for. They had $20,000 in materials that were donated and actually did a pop-up skateboard up in Tahoe. What they're looking to do is they want to improve the Corder Madera Skateboard Park. That project could be upwards of 300,000. They think they can raise all the money. So there's going to be, yeah, there's going to be more to follow on that. My most parents, Amy and Jason, they're, they're just really great people. So again, more is going to come on that. And that's it.
Cause it's been three weeks. I guess my memory is a little lapse. We discussed the police and fire since we approved both of the, those councils budgets as well. So, so I attended both those and, and you know, there was, there was nothing, they're both fiscally sound and, and you know, nothing out of the ordinary. I also attended the Chamber of Commerce today. And part of it was the TOT discussion comes up because that will also drastically affect their fiscal health. So they're also considering that. And then also the hotel representative was actually there. So I, I don't think that we'll be addressing that in this next coming year, but it is that they will know and will be able to identify and address it as it comes up and really anticipate it. But yeah, they're really excited about fourth of July. I think it's going to be a much a really great event, you know, with the end of COVID and stuff. Hopefully we'll have really good attendance and they hired the same band as last year, which I heard, you know, from most people was really good and people really liked it. Yeah. And then it, it was really good for the, the MCMCC meeting. You know, it made me really proud of everything that we've accomplished in town to be able to showcase, you know, how, how we've all come together and created such beautiful spaces. I mean, I don't know that everybody always gets to enjoy that, but when you do it, it really feel, it makes the event really special. And you know, I, I think it really set a good tone and aspiration for hopefully some of the other municipalities. And so it was a real privilege to be the mayor, you know, the mayor in a, in a event like that. It was probably the best party I've ever got to throw, right? Or most important. So thank you for that. And with that, I'll end my reports. So with that, we can move on to the discussion of the draft agenda for upcoming town council meetings. Does anyone have any view or direction to staff about that?
I just have a quick question for Rebecca. During the next two months, do you know, or three months, do you know what our meeting schedules like? June, July, and then into August?
It's on the, it was in the consent calendar.
Okay. Oh, thanks. Sorry.
Thank you, Councilmember Casissa. Yes, it was an item on the consent calendars who ask or request cancellations of the first meeting of each month in July, August and September.
Okay.
So the, the July meeting falls on July 4th holiday. Can't remember off the top of my head about August, August 1st. Yes. And then September, I believe 5th. But which falls the day after Labor Day.
Okay, thanks.
And I, I, if we can, an enthusiastic yes on the food where ordinance presentation, even if it's not all final. I'm getting, I'm getting poked by my environmental friend saying, why isn't Corder Madera doing this? And I said, we're, we'd rather get it right than do it fast.
Yeah. And I'd also like Eli to be here because he's also been doing research and I think he has some interesting information to share on that topic as well.
He'll be back, right?
If he is, and I would want him to be just because of some of the information he shared with me. So if we're okay, we've provided direction. Did you have anything you wanted to add? Okay. So we're not in adjournment.